All right, thank you very much for joining us to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is 9:00 AM Wednesday, November 10th, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time is citizen input for items not on the agenda. We do have two requests to speak. One is going to be Mr. Dennis Gant. And thank you very much for following the process. Just come sit up at a table here. There's a microphone. It's going to pick up, pick up your voice. And this is available to anybody. So you left a message yesterday, and I was talking to you before this, the fact that anybody can come in and testify at the beginning of a board meeting for any topic that's not on the agenda. So there's also an effort to get organized for emails that come into us and have them prepared for acknowledgement up here. But thank you very much for joining us.
You bet. Thanks for hearing me. Ready?
Yes.
My name is Dennis Gant. I live at 64636 Huddle Road. I would first like to convey how appreciative I am that the county road department and commissioners have strived to work with the Huns in the planning of the Huddle Road project. I am by no means ungrateful for the accommodations made. I feel that we are close but not quite there in accomplishing the improvement while striving to have the least impact on those of us who live along Huddle Road. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Swallow Irrigation District. We have done some piping projects which are not always welcome from the property owners. So in order to mitigate the effects of our work, we try to go the extra mile and make the construction impacts as little as possible. We try never to remove trees unnecessarily, and we bring in topsoil if requested and so forth. My point is that we always try to mitigate it and work with the property owners as much as possible. And I encourage the county to do the same, you know, while accomplishing their objectives with the least impact on the property owners. And when I built my house in 79, I was at the end of the pavement, you know, and I realized that with, you know, growth comes change, and I understand, and the road's slowly going through, we just don't quite understand why it needs to be such a major road if it indeed is built as just getting us all to town easier. And while my property's not been condemned for this project, I do feel sorry for those who will lose property and have increased visual and auditory proximity to a major roadway. The largest impact will be to the Cole property, which involves taking approximately three quarters of an acre. The proposed design involves a huge amount of land combination, and this section of the road is of crucial concern. In addition to the taking of land and increased proximity to the roadway, the new road makes it much more difficult for at least one landlord to irrigate his property. I also don't see why they have to cut straight across his property instead of just making some sweeping turns. And I gave you guys a map of my suggestion, so it wouldn't take so much of his property. And then I'd like them to explain why the road is not being designed within the existing right of way. We were told it would originally stay within the right of way, but it's leaving it quite a bit. And those turns, humps and bumps and things will help slow traffic down. I mean, they're spending money to condemn property, to straighten it out, which will increase speed, and then spending money to put in traffic calming devices to slow it down. And, you know, that doesn't make sense to me. I mean, we realize that the road has to be approved, has to go through, but why not keep it a small, you know, community road instead of making it another old Ben Redmond highway when it doesn't need to be? And thank you for your time, and I hope you'll take this into consideration. It's not too late to change things now, but once it's built, you know, the horse is out of the barn, and it's a done deal.
Great. Thank you very much.
Dennis, Chris Dodi is on the line.
Okay.
If he was listening to what you were saying. And yes, I've ridden a horse before next to the road. I know people there ride horses. And, you know, when, yeah, I've had a vehicle go by me 55 miles an hour when you're on a horse, and it's not a pleasant feeling, so.
Yeah. I mean, I used to be able to ride all the way to the Los Schwab. I had a friend that lived down there to ride my horse from my house to his place, but that ship sailed a long time ago.
Yeah, you have to be really careful with today's.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
At this time, next request to speak, Ron Bozell. Topic is, please at the table would be good.
Thank you. Testing. I'm Ron Bozell. Most know me by Rondo. I have been a resident of Bend for 32, 31 years. There are a lot of homeless veterans that live in our county, and they all need, they and their dogs, all need a place to be. Our county has ability to purchase or turn a foreclosed property into something that can be leased to those who cannot afford housing in the normal manner. So I think the challenge is before us without really any debate. Our government that loves people, serves people, and we see you guys do that every day, you commissioners, pardon me. We see you helping businesses pay higher wages and giving grants to other businesses and investing in our community in a lot of different ways. And I see that as no different except for just another tool to love the people you serve. So I would like to stop putting long timelines on the ability and the execution of what we can do. Veterans, when they go to jail, or when they go to rehab, or any other life-changing event that can happen to them, becomes worse because then they lose their pet. And I know a lot of people who just don't give a damn about homeless people, but they love dogs. So I want to remind anybody that might be considering running for office or staying in office to continue doing the great job that you guys are doing, excuse me again, our commissioners, our public servants. I embrace those thoughts and feelings that you have for us, that I know you all have for us. And I ask you to take that next step and stop making us wait because we know that tomorrow, the average price of sales of homes in this county is not going to go down. And the math in my head and in my observation is that that just translates to more homeless people. So take the wellness test. It's a proof of what you guys are doing for effectiveness. And I thank you all, Tony, Phil, and Patty, for continuing to do the excellent job that you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the testimony. So at this time, is there anyone else to speak on any subject not on the agenda? Is there anybody in Zoom or a phone number we don't recognize? Okay. Thank you for participating in today's meeting.
Because it is Veterans Day tomorrow, I would like to acknowledge that our Veterans Village will have a special ceremony at 11:11 tomorrow morning. It took us a lot longer than what I thought because we went there to Clackamas last year, September 1st, and, you know, but thank goodness, it's going to be opening for some of our homeless veterans, 15 of them, starting on the 12th of November. And it's critical. I so appreciate service by so many that have made our country what it is today. So, yes, and there are more that we need to serve, more homeless veterans. But the other good thing is that adding our two judges for Deschutes County will mean that our justice, our Veterans Court will able to be a full-time process in Deschutes County before we could implement some things, helping the veterans through the judicial court system. But we didn't have the capacity because of our judges. But now, hopefully, starting in January, we'll have that capacity to bring veterans in to that service so they don't get part of that system and make the difference. And in fact, the last two years, I believe, we've given grants to veterans' pets. They are, they are very important to them, and definitely, I'm happy that we were able to do that.
The Veterans Village is a really great step in the right direction, and we can still do more. So thank you for your testimony.
All right. At this time, consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Item number five, consideration of Deschutes County Adult Parole and Probation Grant in Aid Funding and IGA. Trevor Stevens.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Trevor Stevens, and I'm here with, DV Holcomb is joining the line as well, and we are here today. We're seeking BOCC approval and chair signature on document number 2021-904, which is an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Corrections, and it provides community corrections funding that we know all as grant and aid funding. Now, grant and aid funding is appropriated by the legislator to county community correction agencies through DOCC to administer community correction programs, and those are done in the form of supervision, sanction, and services, and is also administered to house offenders serving less than 12 months in our local county jails. So money is allocated to each county based on their caseload percentages of statewide community correction felony offenders. And the goal of the funding is to promote public safety by holding offenders accountable for their actions and reducing the risk of future criminal behavior. Now, counties utilize this funding to work with adults sentenced to probation, post-prison supervision, and those coming directly out of prison. And more recently, the Department of Corrections has asked counties to really work on balancing short-term accountability with long-term behavior change. Now, as Deschutes County, we receive a formula allocation for this funding, and the 2123 allocation amount is $11,836,132. Now, this is roughly a 3% increase from the previous biennium. And so we have designed many of our services around what research says works in terms of our community corrections plan. And grant and aid provides a majority of the funding for our community corrections programs here in Deschutes County. Now, the community corrections plan describes our goals and intentions for using the state funding and explains how it's in alignment with our individual goals in the county as well as the goals provided by the state. Now, our local Public Safety Coordinating Council reviewed the plan on November 2nd, and they recommend that the Board of County Commissioners accept the plan and sign the IGA. Our community corrections plan references 12 program areas based on the programs outlined by the Department of Corrections. We've provided a copy of that plan, and we are available to answer any questions that you may have. We are seeking BOCC approval on the plan as well as signature on the IGA for the grant and aid funding, and we are available for any questions.
I have a kind of high-level question. Earlier in the year, or, you know, before the legislature passed the budget, I was hearing concerning reports that, you know, state commitment to parole and probation funding or community justice funding was, was looking iffy, or, you know, that we might experience some cuts. So does this allocation reflect that the legislature and the state have fully come through, or, you know, are we still concerned about, you know, the state policymakers' commitment to these programs?
Based on this allocation, I think what they provided an increase for was cost-of-living increase. Now, some of our numbers actually decreased a little bit, so we didn't, I think the cost-of-living increase that they allocated for was 5%. Because our numbers decreased a little bit, we're right around that 3%. But I think this does represent that they did fully fund those activities, and the cuts that we were possibly anticipating did not come to fruition this year.
Good to know. Thank you.
So when I see the 20% going to the Sheriff's Department, it reminds me of a term 1145 funding. Is that the same terminology years later?
Yes, it is the same funding. It has many different names.
Yep. So just acknowledging that we've done a internal kind of audit review, the balance of needs and services, so we've come up with a, you know, a fair allocation of these dollars for that 20% also. So, you know, just acknowledging that, that it is kind of a, in, well, I guess it's a question. It's an internal decision about that percentage? Is that correct?
Yes, it is up to the counties to determine how the allocation is split up.
Okay, great.
Trevor, I was wondering, looking at the total budget of over 16 million, is this distributed statewide per population, or are there some other formulas that determine how much of the funding we get?
Many of the, many of those funding streams are based on formula allocations based on our percentages, but other ones are based on either just, like, the FT within that program or the request that we made to the Department of Corrections. But a majority of them are actually based on formula allocations based on the percentage of individuals that we have on supervision.
Okay, so the number of people that we have in that, okay, that's what I was curious about, because so many times I see where Multnomah County gets more funding than we do. But if their percentage is higher, then, okay, that would make sense.
Yes, and the majority of these larger funding streams are based on that formula allocation. So I think we represent, I think it's 4.16 of the population in Deschutes County comparative to all of community corrections populations. So we get our funding based on that 4.16 amount.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
One other question. Can you, can you unpack a little bit how the housing component of this works? Like, where are you putting people and who, you know, what kind of housing providers are you working with?
So we work with a variety of actually housing providers here in Deschutes County. We have what we consider contracted transitional housing, so that's through Bethlehem Inn. The Bethlehem Inn, we have seven reserved beds on, at any given time, we have seven beds on reserve, and they work a special case management program with those individuals. It's generally about a 90-day program, and the goal of that program is to transition those individuals into a more permanent form of housing. And so that's our transitional housing. We have managed sober housing through our treatment providers, our main one being Pfeiffer and Associates. We have 12 beds on reserve with them at any given time, and those beds are full every single month, and many times we are quite a bit over those beds. So we do provide additional funding for over that 12-bed quota as well. We also have other treatment providers that provide sober housing. And so we contract, we don't contract with them, but we provide housing, we will help pay for housing on a monthly basis here or there, depending on the individual in that program. We also work with Oxford House, Ben Recovery Home, and many of the other transitional housing providers such as House of Hope or Dawn's House here in Bend. We will provide an individual with funding to really address those barriers that may prevent them from being successful on supervision.
That's great. Do you feel that, do you feel that there's enough capacity out there in those transitional and supported housing and temporary shelter-type setups?
No, I think we are definitely in need of more transitional housing resources. One area that we really are in need of is sex offender housing. As you know, central Oregon is quite a hard place for anyone to find housing, let alone someone with a sex offense. We have individuals right now that we have very difficult times placing, and, I mean, we have resources to help them with housing, but we have very difficult times placing them because we just do not have the resources in the community available for things such as sex offender housing. And we could always use more transitional housing beds. It's just a really important resource, getting these individuals into these resources so they can utilize that housing and reduce their barriers to address their other treatment needs, and then hopefully successfully transition into the community into more permanent housing, and then be more successful in our community as well.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
So move the chair's signature on document number 2021-904.
Second.
Any other discussion? So just a moment, say, congratulations to Director Holcomb. I know you mentioned she was on the call here. We haven't heard from her today, but just a moment of acknowledgement of her advancement in her career. Congratulations. With that, call him for the vote, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. There she is. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
And it looks like you got some good staff being able to answer all the questions right up front. So you're all set, huh?
That's right.
There you go.
That's right. Thank you.
Okay, motion pass. At this time, item number six, Deschutes County Audit, Parole and Probation Measure 57 Funding and the IGA for the biennium.
Thank you, Commissioners. So up next, we are seeking BOCC approval and chair signature on document number 2021-905. And this is an intergovernmental agreement, again, with the Department of Corrections. Now, this is for Measure 57 funding, and Measure 57 funding is appropriated by the legislature to the Department of Corrections to make grants available to counties for providing services for drug-addicted individuals as part of the implementation of Measure 57. We've received these funds for quite a number of years, and it's actually based on a formula allocation. So we get it based on our 4.16 amount for the county. Now, Deschutes County receives the formula allocation, and our allocation for this 2123 biennium is $489,211. This is a little over 2% more than the previous biennium. And we've used these funds to fund 1.5 FTE, who supervise individuals with these, the specific population, and who really kind of evaluate those individuals based on their risk and needs. Once we do a risk assessment, we kind of supervise those individuals based on that risk assessment, and we really connect them to the treatment services and housing services that are necessary for them to help be successful on probation. We contract with our community treatment providers to provide these resources, as I mentioned, some of the housing providers previously. And we also use services such as jail, electronic monitoring, and community service, NUAs, to kind of help ensure that short-term accountability. We are constantly working with officers to really balance that idea of short-term accountability with this long-term behavior change. And we are working with individuals on probation in these office visits to really kind of put in evidence-based practices to help with that long-term behavior change. And we are here again, once again, to answer any questions you may have about Measure 57 funding, and we are seeking approval and chair signature on the intergovernmental agreement. So, thank you.
One observation, this is kind of the cross-section of people that may be in our community with addictions and issues, providing drug and alcohol treatment is what we're talking about here, and offenders. So when we say offenders, that's somebody that's been adjudicated in being probation possibly. And sorry, the terminology is kind of tricky here for me, but.
Yeah. There'll be our clients that are either on probation, meaning that they did not go to prison, or, and they're likely on a downward departure, so they probably have quite a history of drug and property crimes, and so they're serving a downward departure. So if they complete this, then they won't go to prison. It also can be individuals that are releasing from prison with drug and property crimes that would fall into this category as well, so.
That helps. Just kind of thinking it through a little. Any other discussion?
No questions.
Seeing none. Is there a motion?
I move approval and signature of the IGA for Measure 57 funding.
Okay. Document number 2021-905, I'll second.
Yeah, sorry about that.
And for chair signature.
Yes, it's chair.
Signature work there. Okay, any other discussion?
You got it.
Sorry, I left my, I left that document, I left that staff report upstairs, so I don't have all the.
That's all the things we needed. Call him for the vote, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay. Item number seven, consideration of document for collective bargaining agreement. So, okay, switching gears here. Thank you very much, Trevor. So this is a consideration, a board signature for a collective bargaining agreement between Deschutes County and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator. Joining me this morning is Ethan Lang. Ethan works in health services and is currently serving as the ASME president. Also, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, good morning. Thanks for having me here.
Thank you for joining us.
Also joining us via Zoom may be Brenda Johnson, who is the ASME Council Representative. Brenda's role is to represent different governments throughout central and eastern Oregon for ASME. So she works for ASME, and Ethan works for the county, just to distinguish that. I'm pleased to present a four-year contract with ASME. ASME is our largest bargaining group, representing employees throughout the county, the largest number of employees happen to be in health services. The ASME bargaining team represented that and included Brenda Johnson, who I mentioned, Ethan Lang, Caroline Oxarzak, and Abby Levin. For the county, the county's bargaining team included Amy Heberly from Legal, Nick LeLac from CDD at the time, but of course, his transition, Jason Bavuso from Health Services, Lacey Anthony from Finance, Chris Wyler and Holly Harris from Health Services, and Whitney Hale and myself from Admin. So that was the bargaining team. Just to highlight the four-year contract, year one COLA is 1.5%, which matches most of the other bargaining and non-reps throughout the county. The year one, of course, goes, started on July 1st. Year two COLA is a 1.5 to 3.5 range based on CPI, but the CPI index changes. The current methodology is methodology is based on all U.S. cities, and the new methodology focuses on the western region. It also looks at a 12-month rolling look back, so there's a slight change in CPI methodology. Year three and four also uses this new methodology, but the range changes from 1.5 to 3.5. It changes to 1 to 4. The contract also increases longevity by $2.50 per five years, which matches our other contracts, and there's also an increase on how much we pay to employees who serve as interpreters. It increases from $10 a day to $20 a day. The contract also has a new pay grade for the peer support specialist. This item came up earlier this week when Health Services was adding a peer support specialist for veterans, and I know there's discussion about that classification. But essentially, the peer support job duties had changed since the last class and comp study. So although we did not bargain the pay grade, we agreed to take a look at it and did a lot of work with the peer support specialist, and based on their changed job duties, the pay grade went up four pay grades, which is, represents about 20%. And then what you'll see in the contract is a letter of agreement on the implementation of that new pay grade, and so that's the piece that was bargained. There are some other changes to the contract, including notification during the disciplinary process, which is covered in Article 6. There's a small adjustment to the effective date when an employee receives a reclassification, and other changes. I'm pleased to report that ASME ratified the contract late last week, and the management team is recommending board approval of the contract. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. So any comments, Ethan?
No, not particularly. I think the work kind of speaks for itself, and though our bargaining was at times frustrating and even contentious in a couple moments, we wouldn't be here unless we both felt comfortable that we had a good contract.
Right. Yeah, it's a process. I know it is. So thank you very much. This is a proposal that is backdating to July 1st this year. I also understand that, so...
That's correct.
It's good that we're getting the process done. I know that we started, we, you know, had heard about this. Okay, it's coming up almost a year ago, so it's been a process for the whole, the whole system here, so. Thank you very much. It's great to have a great relationship with the represented groups, long history of this also. And as I say, it's a negotiation, but we're completed now, so.
Yeah, and if it wasn't hard, then there'd be no room for growth, so.
There you go.
I think Eric and I both have a lot deeper respect for one another, and ultimately the county and the union has better rapport because we both fought so hard for what we believed in.
Great.
It is interesting that it's a four months late, but it's going to go for four years. So I thank, you know, the negotiations for making a four-year contract. I think that's really significant, and we so appreciate that. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to express appreciation for agreeing to a four-year contract. I know that these negotiation processes are, you know, demanding, challenging, intense, and, you know, getting to, getting to an agreement that people feel good about that can last four years is a benefit for all of us. You know, some specific things I'd like to say are that I'm glad, I'm really glad that we were able to get to a broader range of 1 to 4 and out years, which is, you know, dialing up from the ranges in the contracts that we've negotiated recently with other employee unions and may indicate where we're going in the future. The inflation that we're seeing right now is, you know, for working people in this community must be terrifying, and, you know, the larger we can make that range, I think, the better. And, you know, just because you have a max four or, you know, even higher on that range, it doesn't mean that that is, that is what's going to happen in the next year. It just means that you have the size range or the range to be able to actually provide people with a cost of living adjustment that is in line with the inflation that has occurred. And so I'm also really glad that we've moved to this western region cities, you know, CPI index for that reason, because, you know, I do hope that inflation, you know, comes under control a little bit in, you know, in the next year as supply chain bottlenecks sort themselves out, and as, you know, kind of all this pent-up, you know, consumer demand, you know, works itself out, but we don't know what's going to happen. So it's really important that we're taking care of our employees and, you know, providing them the ability to continue to live in this increasingly expensive community.
Well, wonderful. Thank you very much for getting this to the representative group for, I don't know if it was a vote or how the process happens exactly, but for ratification. And now we're here on the management side, so. Is there a motion?
So I move approval of contract number 2021-894, a collective bargaining agreement between Deschutes County and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 3997. It's from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I would also just say that, you know, I'm really glad that we, we got to longevity commitments that show respect for long-term service, and I'm also really glad that we are recognizing the contributions of peer support specialists and people who do translation and interpretation for us, you know, that those are, those are skills that we really need, or experiences that we really need, and that help us do our job better, and that we are actually recognizing that in the way that we compensate people.
Yeah. Our philosophy is we want to make sure that the experience of the community with the county is as best as it can be, and our philosophy is if our employees are happy, they're going to be better suited to keep our community happy. So we wanted to try and recognize those specialties and reward that specialty.
Yeah. Yeah, that, our county staff every day do amazing work for our community, and I'm glad that we can honor and respect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're a little bit ahead of schedule now, so our COVID-19 update. So let's just, no rush, but kind of get organized for this. I know Nahad had come and gone in the room here. We may have some people on Zoom. Slides are available. So as I say, let's just take a moment and get organized for this. So Emily Freeland and Rita Bacho, and then Michael Johnson will be available online also.
Yes, we could remind everyone about the property tax bills being due.
Sure.
What is it, next Monday, by the 15th, I think? There's a discount involved.
Well, and then a press release put out by some website that was acting like they were going to be able to take tax payments, so please be real clear and careful about who you're sending them to. There's definitely activity out in the world, online, looking to receive those tax payments, and that may not be the county, is what we just learned on some instances.
I know. I had a call from someone. They were trying to actually pay their property tax with a visa, and they were having all kinds of issues, and the good news is they finally decided they would just mail in their check. So, safer maybe?
For sure.
Unless you really want your miles, but the fee was exorbitant, so is, were the miles really, you know, miles?
3%.
Miles, visa fee.
There's a lot of little moving parts there.
I tried to get to that one time. It was too expensive.
Okay, so this will be our COVID health update. This is item number eight, and we're going to do a Facebook Live at this time also. I thank everybody for joining us. We're a little ahead of schedule today, so that, I bet that'll help, help everybody.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nahad Sadrazoudi. I'm the Director of Public Health for Deschutes County Health Services. I'm joined by my colleagues Rita Bacho, Public Health Manager, and Emily Freeland, who is our COVID Response and Recovery Supervisor. They are going to be doing the heavy lifting around this presentation. I'm just here for moral support. We are, I just text Dr. Johnson as well, because I think he was expecting to come on a few minutes from now, but I just text him to hopefully get him to log in as well, if he hasn't already. Shall we get started with your permission?
No rush if we want to confirm Dr. Johnson's going to be here. I don't know how fast we get to set of slides for him.
We can, with your agreement, we can have Emily get started, and I'll go get on the phone with Michael as well and see if I can get him.
Great.
Are you sure you don't want to deliver any sports commentary before?
Oh, it's coming.
It's coming. He said he'll be on in five minutes, so I think we're doing well. Yeah, it's embedded in the slides. I try to be, yeah, a little bit more discreet, so.
Okay, yeah, let's proceed then. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thanks for having us for this update. I guess I'll go ahead and share my screen, so unless, do you guys have the slides up there?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, share the screen, yep.
Yeah, okay. Just making sure, because sometimes we do it that way, and sometimes we do it this way.
Yeah, I should have informed you.
Yeah. Okay, can everyone see that?
Well, not exactly.
Ah, we can, yep.
Yes.
Okay. So I am joined by Rita Bacho, who is the Program Manager for Advancement and Protections, and like we mentioned, Dr. Johnson will be here to share the health system update. So, so the case counts that we have been seeing for COVID-19 are varying, but they're staying at a very high level. So I think that we are seeing cases down last week in around 609 cases last week. This is significantly lower than our highest case count, which was at the end of August, early September, around 1,000, but they're still much higher than we have seen throughout the pandemic. So as you can see here, our numbers are continuing to stay high, although perhaps stabilizing a little. This is concerning because we're moving into a time of year when people are going inside more and interacting socially in different ways. So perhaps this decrease in cases will be kind of, you know, taken back by that type of interaction that we'll be seeing in the next few weeks. So our case rates are highest among young adults, as we can see here. This chart shows the last four weeks of case rates, so starting for October 10th through the 16th and moving through November 6th, and you can see here that the case rates are much higher in young adults and moving to lower numbers in the 50 and up age ranges. All of our case rates have decreased in the last week except for our 5 to 11-year-olds and 60 to 69-year-olds, which those case rates increased slightly. So this is pretty much inversely proportional to the vaccine, vaccination rates. So we have higher vaccination rates with 65 and older, which is 97.9% of those people are vaccinated, down to our newest group that has been eligible, which is the 5 to 11-year-olds, at 2.9%. So even in the last week, since we have started receiving doses in central Oregon, we're seeing movement in that numbers, which will be great in the future. And then 12 to 17-year-olds were about 58.6%, and this increases, like I said, up to those older age groups.
Emily?
So as far...
Can I ask you a question? So, for the, so exciting, especially seeing our case rates, that 5 to 11-year-olds have access to vaccine now, how long is, from the time of administering the vaccine, like how long does it take until that 5 to 11-year-old has protection, some degree of protection from COVID? And, I mean, is it comparable to the adult vaccines, or is the timeline different?
So, the fully vaccinated would be the same timeline, two weeks post-second vaccine, just like the adults. So this is the II series Pfizer vaccine. It's just a lower dose. As far as some protection, I think that there is some protection after the first dose. Sometime after that takes a couple of weeks to start getting protection. I don't have those numbers in front of me about like what that looks like, and maybe Nahad or Rita has some more data in front of them about that, but I don't think, you know, I don't have those numbers right in front of me. But the full vaccination, which we think is about 90% effective in children, is that two weeks post-second dose.
Yeah. Yeah, the data I've seen show that they're, they're very comparable to what we've seen in adults. Yeah.
And the sequence, the schedule for administering the vaccines is the same as...
It's the same. Exactly. Exactly. Thank you. Just lower dose.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So as far, oh, can I go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So as far as our case follow-up, so this is for all those 600 cases that we received last week, we were able to contact or attempt contact with 89% of those people within 24 hours. This is stable, stabilizing over the last several weeks due to increase in case investigation capacity within our core team, as well as slight decreases in numbers. So our testing volume has also become stabilized. We see typical test, number of tests being administered in Deschutes County, somewhere between 6,000 and 8,000 tests per week, and you can see the dotted line there is our test positivity rate, which is hovering right around 10%. So this is still relatively high. That means that most, you know, 10% of tests that are being administered are coming back positive, but it is decreasing slightly from that high that we saw again at the end of August, early September.
Emily, it's Commissioner Dare. I have a question. Last report, we actually got the breakthrough numbers for those cases. Is that not available this time? It was the breakthrough for the entire period because it's up, it was up around ranging from, you know, 26 to 30% of breakthrough positives. And I think that's really important for our community to understand. You know, I was reading a document about Johnson &amp; Johnson when it was written last February, and it said that it was 85% effective, and yet 15 million Americans got that shot, which I was one of them, and then I got COVID, you know, recently. But it, in two months, after you can get a J and J shot, you actually qualify for a booster. So I'm just, you know, I think people need to know what breakthrough numbers are. Deschutes County was originally vaccinated early, remember? We were kind of ahead of the curve. We were doing fabulously, and then they shut us down for a bit. So perhaps people that are now turning out positive, that have been vaccinated, got their vaccination, you know, what, in the end of December, January, instead of later in the year? Is there any kind of work done on that?
So I think that there's a couple of things that you're touching on there. One is the breakthrough case rate, which we can pull that information up towards the end of the presentation or update those numbers. They're not in our slides, as you mentioned here today. There's several reasons those numbers might be higher, and one of those is that people that are more likely to get the vaccine are also more likely to be tested if they become sick. So that can skew those numbers and make the breakthrough rates look a little bit higher. The second thing is waning immunity, which it sounds like is possibly what you're touching on there, which is why we're encouraging those booster doses for people in certain populations. The other thing that I'll just mention sort of anecdotally, I think we focus a lot on this, this breakthrough case rate, which is important, but there's two factors, and I think Dr. Johnson might touch on this as well. One is like the severity of your illness, if you've been fully vaccinated, is much lower. The second is we focus less on all of those cases that are prevented. So just in the last week, from my personal experience, so this is not work-related at all, I've had three friends or family members that had really high-risk exposure situations. They were with somebody, either caring for their own child, who had been... own child, who had become positive, or multiple children that had become positive, or been around a friend or family member before they were diagnosed. So like in that very high in the contagious period at the beginning of illness, before the person knew they were sick. And three of those people, for the next 14 days, really monitored themselves and were tested several times, and never became sick. So I think that it's important to know there are breakthrough cases, and you know, you're not 100% protected, and you should still be cautious, especially if you become symptomatic. But secondarily, that there are these stories where the vaccine works and people are protected. I mean, the people that I was around or have, you know, had shared these stories with me, were just shocked that they weren't becoming sick, because they had had this super-high-risk exposure, multiple hours or even days with people that were contagious. So like I said, we can pull those numbers up and update you on that as well.
And it does look like, when we get into Dr. Johnson's presentation, that there's a slide here about breakthrough cases. And I mean, I really do think it's important to remember, we are seeing breakthrough cases, but if close to 80% of the population is vaccinated, but the 80% of our cases are unvaccinated people, we have a tiny fraction of the population accounting for the vast majority of the cases. So in my mind, that is evidence that vaccination helps.
Yeah, there's lots of evidence that vaccination helps. So more than helps is the biggest tool that we have to kind of control the pandemic at this point. So this map shows COVID transmission in the U.S., so we can see that there's varying levels of transmission. And this is from the CDC, ranging from high transmission in most of the West and Southwest, to substantial, and even down in some places, lower transmission rates. So this is just kind of comparing and seeing what we are experiencing now versus other parts of the country.
Thank you for providing that map. You know, I don't know, some analysis on that. I mean, the Southeast, it was mentioned, you know, different political climate and different vaccine, you know, pressure, I guess, community pressure. But so I don't, what does this tell us? You know, I guess, is there a message there? You know, if it's moderate in the Southeast, and, you know, as I say, you could analyze this all day long, and the rest of the country's in the red. You know, so as I say, if we just prolong the fact that it's going to go through the community or not, and people are processing this all the time, and you know, everybody's getting in a conversation, you know, what are the facts? What do we know? What's the conclusions? So it's great to see this information, but is there any information we can glean from this?
I'm wondering whether, you know, in parts of the country where people don't believe in COVID, don't believe in masking, don't believe in vaccination, they also get sick and they don't bother to go get tested?
Yeah, so as I say.
That can account for lower numbers.
Yeah. So then it's a function of possible death rate, too, you know. So then, if that's the case, people get sick, people recover, don't track it, so what's the big picture?
This isn't, this diagram doesn't show death rates. It shows case.
But I'm, and I'm just acknowledging, you know.
Reported case numbers.
People come to me on this topic, and I'm like, well, you know, we've got the best science available. We know what we're doing here, I think. And then we see different scenarios across the country. So as I say, there could be a lot of analysis on something like this.
Well, I think it's worth looking at the, at maps like this at the state scale. Basically, we know that in the, in the communities, in the counties around the state, that have higher vaccination rates, that are surrounded by counties with higher vaccination rates, cases are plummeting. And here, they're not. And in eastern Oregon, they're not. So.
If I can jump in just for a second?
Oh, there we go. Dr. Johnson, thank you.
My apologies. I was trying to be two places at once this morning, and it didn't quite work. The real danger, when people take a look at a chart like this, is they don't keep, they take it out of context. This is a snapshot in time. I mean, those areas down in the Southeast that you're looking at, that are moderate right now, is kind of a pay me now or pay me later thing. And it's, and we're not all paying in the same way. In the South, they paid dearly, early, not just by getting sick earlier, but more severe, higher death rates, higher hospitalization rates. And as a result, it has run through many of their communities to the point where they have like 90% of the people have either been infected or vaccinated. And we know that the vaccination rates are very low. So they have paid in a very, very hard, dear manner. And so now it's, they're starting to recover a little bit. But I mean, you have to take a look at these things on a temporal basis. And it's very dangerous just to take a look at a snapshot in time and try and read more into it, other than this is what we're looking at now. So I mean, I just offer that.
Well, that's, that's kind of the information I was looking for. And, you know, I mean, those are the hard realities. You know, if there's a higher death rate, and it's been more acute, and there's a, you know, a moderate transmission rate now, it's just cause and effect, and it's good to understand what that says.
Yeah.
There are areas in the country that have a death rate that's over six times what it is in central Oregon. So.
If I may add, I think one other message that I walk away with when I look at something like this, of course, with some background to it, is that obviously what we see here is, well, we don't see it here, but what we know is that some of the states have higher rates of vaccination coverage than others. And yet, this variant is very democratic, even in those states where we have high coverage, or even in those regions or counties where we have high coverage. It's not like they, there are boundaries that we can keep this virus away and protect ourselves. So that's the nature of communicable disease, and that's where questions around individual choice and freedom come into play as well, in that our decisions have an impact, not just on ourselves, but on those around us as well. So this speaks to the protection that perhaps we might get from vaccination, and yet, still, the transmission is occurring widely, and to the variant, the nature of this virus as well, and perhaps the next one that will come into play. So the quicker we can get population immunity up in the U.S. and around the globe, the better chance we have of fighting this virus.
Great conversation. Thank you.
Yeah. So as with most things, I think the takeaway here also is that it's very complex, and there's a lot of variables at play. And not all of them are measurable or comparable from state to state or place to place. So it makes it really complex to just take a look at one piece and compare those two things at a snapshot in time, like Dr. Johnson said. You know, you have to look at the full picture, which can be really, you know, not easy to do. So moving on here, we want to make sure our community is aware. We have had, like we said in the beginning, our testing volume, week over week, is typically somewhere between 6,000 and 8,000 tests are being administered. There's a new no-cost, rapid PCR testing that's available in our community. This is something where we've worked with community partners, including OHA, to make sure that this is available. It is by appointment in Redmond. You can schedule an appointment at this URL here. It's open over the weekend, so Thursdays through Mondays, from noon to 7:00 p.m., and provide some of that evening testing that's available, or has been difficult for some people to get. And the results are in one to two hours. So it's not an antigen test. It is a PCR test, but it's a rapid PCR test. And there should be no out-of-pocket costs for anyone who is accessing this testing resource.
Emily, do we have, do we have the percentage of effectiveness of this test? You know, I was given a COVID test, and I was told it was only 84% effective, as far as, you know, the error rate. So what is, do you know what the rate is on this test?
I don't know what the rate is on this test. No.
Maybe Dr. Johnson knows.
I'm sorry, I don't. I know we can find that for you.
But just Commissioner, this is a molecular test, and it has higher sensitivity and specificity compared to the antigen tests. So we are, so we're definitely more confident about the reliability of this test compared to the rapid antigen ones. Go ahead.
For terminology, just for my sake, when we say antigen test, is that an antibody test? As in, your body has responded to the virus, and that's what you can measure when you say antigen?
Yeah. So right now, we have two kinds of, just to simplify, we have two kinds of tests. One is the molecular test, which looks at, basically amplifies the genes of the virus. And we're able to determine presence of the virus in the body. And then the other is where it looks at the protein. And for that, you really need to have a high volume of the virus available in the body, and that's where some of that reliability question comes in. So we have two types of tests for probably two different purposes and timeline that are utilized for us at this point.
So then PCR would be earlier confirmation. Antigen is when there's more activity for your body responding to it. I'm just thinking the high level.
Yeah, and both of them have their own limitations. Go ahead, Emily.
Well, I was just going to add, I think the third type of test that you're mentioning is an antibody test, and that's not a diagnostic test. So an antibody test is going to show, you're going to test positive on that if you've been vaccinated, or you've had the virus in the past. Those are not as common. But some people are administering those for certain groups or for certain reasons. But that is not a diagnostic test. So that's not a test that's going to show if you have an active infection, or you've recently had an active infection. It just measures if you've had antibodies for COVID-19. So there's kind of two diagnostic tests that we typically talk about. One is that antigen test. That's not as sensitive, has a higher false negative rate, you know, there's some things, but it is rapid, and it's easy to do. Those are more of like those at-home type tests. If you're going to Walgreens and picking up an at-home test kit, that's going to be an antigen-type test kit. So it's not very accurate. And then there's these molecular tests that are typically called PCR or NAAT. And then the third category, which is not a diagnostic test, it doesn't tell you if you currently have an infection, or have recently had an infection, and those are those antibody tests. And those are a little bit harder to seek out, and we don't offer any of those. Does that help?
You know, where you can get one of those tests, though, in Deshute County?
An anti, what?
The antibody test.
Sorry, I couldn't hear. Yeah, I know that some providers are providing antibody tests, but I don't have that list off the top of my head.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Emily.
Emily, on the antibody tests, I mean, there are people who are asking, well, if you can check me, and I have a, you know, a robust antibody presence in my body, like, do I really need to go get vaccinated? Or do I need to, do I need to be as worried about exposure to COVID? And what would, what do we say to those people?
So Dr. Johnson, Rita, or Nahad might have something to add here, but I would just start out by saying, you know, we don't have a measure of like a titer. So a lot of times, we'll talk about a titer or an amount of antibodies that would give you coverage for a certain disease. We don't have that with COVID. And just like everything, it's so new, and things are changing so fast, and we know that there's new variants, and there's new, all of these things. So I would say, you know, if you, the best way to protect ourselves, and we also know that the best way is if you've even had COVID, getting the shot to, that synergistic effect of having both COVID and the vaccine will give you better immune response than either one or the other. If you've had COVID, you know, your immune response, I think last week, or the week before, I guess, Dr. Conway showed a thing with little trees, a graphic with trees that kind of helps illustrate this point, where your immune response from just getting the virus is smaller. The vaccine has a larger response. And then both together, that synergistic effect is the largest. So at this point, we don't have any way to measure, or there's no titer specifically to say, yes, you have enough of an immune response now with the antibodies that you have, that you're protected and covered. At some point, there may be a system that does have that ability to do that, but at this point, that's not where we're at.
So even though there are antibody tests, it's basically just like presence or absence of antibodies, and it doesn't really give you a sense of, you know, how, how much, or how strong an antibody presence you have?
And how long?
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a more of a qualitative, not a quantitative kind of assessment.
Right. And as usual, Emily like nailed it with her description of how that all works. The only thing I'd really like to add is the fact that this virus is so heterogeneous. Like you and I can have exactly the same level of antibodies, and I get sick and you don't. It just, I mean, there's a lot of person-to-person variability. So it's really hard to say, here's the level. So it's, just add that.
To add to everything that everybody has said, I just wanted to talk about the antigen and PCR test. So the reason why we don't really recommend the antigen test is because with the PCR, we are still able to identify the antigens, even if they are not active, even several days after they are active period. But with the antigen test, you are not able to identify that. And you really have to have a really high viral load for it to be able to detect the virus. But with a PCR, even with the very minimal viral load, you'll be able to detect it. So that is why we advocate more for PCR tests versus antigen tests.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great discussion.
Yeah. So we're happy that we have another option, easily accessible weekends, evenings, and in a community that didn't have as much access as before. So as we've mentioned, children ages 5 to 11 are now eligible for the COVID vaccines. So we recommend, and CDC recommends, that all children ages 5 and older get a COVID vaccine. Now, we would also pair this with the fact of this is a new vaccine. It's being distributed like in a new way, because the dose is much smaller. So lots of our pediatricians in our community is waiting on getting doses available to give. So people, although we are recommending and encouraging everyone to reach out to their pediatrician and get their children vaccinated, we also ask that people have patience and give grace to their providers who are trying their hardest to make sure and get this in our community and available for children to get. So like I mentioned, local pediatric clinics are offering the COVID-19 vaccine. So the first thing you're going to want to do is check with your child's pediatrician to see if you can get an appointment. You can check the website or call. You can also go to this, deshute.org/kidvaccines, kids vaccines for options. So Ben Lapine School District has done a really great job of trying to collate and get all the information in one place about where people can access these vaccines. So you can, you can access that great dashboard that they've developed through our website as well. And Nahad was gracious enough to share this picture of his kids getting the vaccine this weekend. So they were, went over to COPA, and on Saturday, both were able to get their vaccines, also while showing their support for some sports teams. We will not finish.
Oh, my God.
Nice, nice one, yeah.
Did that say Ohio State on there? Nahad?
Ranked number four in the country.
Number three in Oregon.
Yep.
So I think the most important job that I have is, as many others, is being a parent. And I had mentioned in the last meeting that maybe six months ago, I didn't feel I had enough information, and I didn't know if I had the confidence necessarily to vaccinate my kiddos when something became available. However, since then, when I look at the emerging data and the evidence around effectiveness of this vaccine, I feel a lot more confident after doing some cost-benefit analysis in my head to get them vaccinated. And we're really grateful to COPA and other providers who are doing their best to schedule these appointments, reach out to parents, and accommodate. these appointments, reach out to parents, and accommodate vaccination of this cohort of young people.
Well, and thanks for sharing, Nahad. You know, that is, that is personal and you are sharing theirs by doing this. Thank you very much.
And I mean, again, just, just looking at, going back and looking at this, this, this case rate chart by age bracket in the county, it is, I'm, I'm alarmed that, that the case rates among five to 11-year-olds are so high and, and you know, and actually increased last week even above where they were. So it's a, I think it's a wonderful thing that these vaccines are now available for five to 11-year-olds.
Yeah. It's definitely a sign of hope and it could be a game changer. If we can get this cohort and even the younger ones eventually vaccinated and with some therapeutics coming into the market as well, we really might be able to end this pandemic. That's at least the way my brain functions.
So this, yeah, this is our COVID update, but Nick, if you want to say hi to her, she's, she wants to share something, but let's not make it a testimony item, please.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. No, I'm asking you not to participate, but Nick will touch base with you. Sorry. Thank you very much. Okay, next slide.
Okay, so our last message that I have this morning is surrounding the holidays coming up. And I kind of mentioned this at the beginning, but we want to give thanks, not COVID. So we want to make sure as people are traveling or making Thanksgiving plans, you know, none of us wants to think about COVID and we, we are all hoping that this is something that's in the past. But the last thing that we want to do is go to a big fat family gathering and have an outbreak. So I have, from my health inspector days, I have two plugs. One is about COVID and making sure that we get vaccinated, get our flu shot, make sure we stay home if you're feeling sick. I mean, no one wants to miss the gathering, but you also don't want to be the index case and get your whole family sick. The second one is about food safety, so just remembering food safety, cooking your turkeys while washing your hands, not cross contaminating.
Back to the basics.
As a health inspector. Yeah, those basic things we want to think about. I always had that moment of panic, thinking I'm going to go to the family gathering and, you know, make everybody sick with whatever I made. So that was an anxiety producing thing for me. Now I have to think about it in two ways, and one is, I don't want to give anyone COVID for my kids or myself. And the second one is that food safety piece. So washing our hands, just being smart, and if you're not vaccinated, or you are around people that you don't live with in close quarters, wearing a mask, protecting yourself as you're traveling on airplanes, wearing those masks correctly, not halfway off your face or on and off, or touching it, taking it on and off, contaminating your hands, touching a lot of surfaces. You know, thinking about those things and minimizing your risk and your chance of transmitting to other people.
Well, and that's one of the items I would absolutely advocate for. I mean, think about it, if you're wearing a mask, think about it about as a little bit of a procedure or a policy about, okay, I'm putting a mask on and, and this is a, you know, a technique instead of, okay, I've got a mask and it's on, it's off, it's up, it's down, I'm just kind of fiddling around with my mask all the time. I mean, there's, there's a different mindset around wearing a mask for a purpose or wearing a mask because you're told to. So please, just think about it. If you're wearing a mask, do it on purpose and, you know, think of it as a doctor going into an emergency surgery or whatever, because that's what you do. You scrub up and then you go in. Just a mindset is what I would advocate for.
And Emily, as long as you're talking about turkeys, apparently there's going to be a turkey shortage. So if you really want to get a turkey, you better order it now, is what I'm hearing.
It isn't one thing, it's another.
I know, I know. As long as we're talking turkey. But, and then my other point, and I keep repeating this, is if you're going to wear a mask, you need to wear a mask that actually works. And a lot of studies have come out that the surgical masks truly are not, they're like not that effective. So please, see if you can find the K-Ns or the N95s are truly effective. I don't think anybody wants to live in one of those out there, but yeah, you've got to wear a mask that actually, bandanas don't work, and you see a lot of people with bandanas on. There's a, you know, if you're really going to wear a mask, please make a, do your research.
Especially Commissioner, thanks for bringing up that point, especially if for whatever reason we're choosing not to get vaccinated, the type of mask especially plays a bigger role in that scenario. So thank you for that. Dr. Johnson, I think you're next.
Thank you very much, and I'll share my screen.
There was more. After vaccination?
Yeah, it's coming, we're going to the next set of slides.
Oh, we're not going to, flip over, huh?
We'll go back to Rita. Yeah.
I only have a, a small number of slides today, and actually, I'm absolutely elated that I think I'm going to end with a little bit of good news, which you've never heard from me yet.
Not yet.
Oh, boy. It must be Thanksgiving time.
Let's get started, yes. But building up to that, there, I really want to set the stage in reality here. And you can see from the chart on the right, that yes, our numbers are coming down finally and relatively consistently, but we are still higher than we were in either one of the two surges. And the correlation between the number of positive cases and the number of patients that are in the hospital is incredibly strong. Last time I checked, it was like 70% correlation. And what, what that tells me is we need to get those numbers, those weekly numbers, those seven-day cumulative number of positive cases down around that 200 mark, which is way down here. You know, like, we need to, you know, 25% of what it is now. So we do have a long ways to go. And the, the one thing that's very promising, and it's the first time in several weeks, we're starting to see the positivity rate drop in, in central Oregon. And it's now cumulatively 9.5%. We're still behind the rest of the state, which is 6.6% now, last time I checked, but we are definitely moving in the right direction. Here's, here's what I'm talking about, that, how the positive cases correlate with hospital beds. So it's, it's kind of a race. We need to get those numbers down quickly because, like Emily was mentioning, you know, we have some holiday seasons coming up, and even the best of intentions, if not executed well, are, could cause another bump. And so I have no idea how to, how to predict the level of, of those bumps, but it is a race. Let's see if we can get those numbers down so that we're not just beat up once again with, with any holiday bumps. And I purposefully use the term bump instead of surge, but that might be a little overly optimistic, but I, I don't know, that's what the model is telling us. Here's something that still is reality, and that is, although we are recovering, we haven't yet caught up to the rest of the state. We have 8% of the population in our region, which includes Deschutes County and seven other counties, but we have 15% of the COVID patients. Now, I'm not sure when everybody looked at this chart last, but this was as high as, we used to have 20% of the COVID patients. And so we are kind of starting to close the gap, but it's, we're still, we still, still nearly are, nearly twice represented. So let's hope that that gets back more in line. This is a chart that you've seen in former fashion already today, but I just want to point out a couple of things, and that is, these numbers have all of a sudden taken a big jump downward. Like, we used to be, you know, say that our vaccination rate was, you know, in the 70s. Well, when you add all those numbers of the five to 11-year-olds who are now eligible for the vaccination, well, that, you know, greatly inflates your denominator. And so we've got some, some ground to make up. And this actually is a little bit closer to reality in that those youngsters can definitely transmit the disease. And so when people throw around the term of herd immunity, before, we have kind of excluded that age group because we were only looking at, you know, the eligible population for, for vaccinations. But in reality, they, they need to be included. And so this is a little bit more realistic view of, of how far we have to go to truly reach some kind of herd immunity, just on the, the vaccination front. Okay, here's something that's not such great news. Although we do expect, the orange line is the ED visits for our pediatric patients for COVID. So we do expect it to come down relatively sharply, down to about the level it was in August, but it's still really hot. And we don't expect on our current path, you know, to really improve with regard to pediatric hospitalizations. We had 10 in October, and we're on track to do that, have that same number in November. So this is, this, if nothing else, is a plea to get those younger age groups vaccinated. And we also have to realize that there is quite a time lag involved with that. It's not like you can get your vaccination today and all of a sudden, we're going to see these numbers change. You know, you've got the, the time period between the first and second dose, and then you have 14 days after that until you're, you're fully protected. So we're not, we're talking like, you know, into the second week in December before we can really start to see the impact of, of those vaccinations. So the sooner we can get those series underway, the, the sooner we'll see the, the effect of that in our community.
Michael, ED stands for?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, the Emergency Department.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Johnson, could I ask a, a question or two about those emergency department visits? I mean, you know, for, for those of us who have, you know, who have, you know, good health insurance and are able to, you know, have a pediatrician for our kid, I, I would think, you know, if my kid is, is, you know, is showing symptoms of, you know, cold-like, flu-like, COVID-like symptoms, I would, I would typically try to get it, get him to see his pediatrician before making a run to the emergency department. Are, are the people you're seeing at the emergency department, are, are those pediatric cases that are, where the symptoms are so severe that people feel like, you know, I've got to rush to get to the emergency department? Are, in some cases, are there people who have, you know, they don't have adequate health coverage, so this is sort of their, their best opportunity to, to get someone to check out their, their sick kid? Or what, what does that look like? What does a pediatric COVID ED visit look like?
You know, that is, that is a great question, and I'm not sure that I'm fully prepared to answer that. It's a little bit outside my wheelhouse. I do know that, you know, there is, there is quite a tendency in many communities for the emergency department to be your, your, what you think is your first choice. And it's not always the, the best solution. I'm not going to speak for the people that we're seeing on this chart because I just haven't dug into it, but you've prompted a very, very good topic, and, and I am going to dig into that, and I'll, I'll see if I can't get some feedback for you. But I'm just not clinical and I've not been on the ground in the ED to see those, so I'm afraid I'm just going to have to defer that to later. But that's a great question.
Yeah, thank you. And I, you know, if there's people who, who are coming in because this is, you know, their healthcare facility of last resort, but it, and it's not because the symptoms are so severe that, I mean, there are other places where people can be going, Mosaic and, and other places. Yeah, but, so it would be helpful to understand that. I, I mean, if, if, if people are coming in with their sick kid because the, the symptoms are so acute, that would also be helpful to know, and, and that would be very alarming.
Yeah, and I can say that, I won't say every one of them, but the vast majority of the hospitalizations have been admitted through the emergency department. So there are, there are some that certainly are showing up with, with youngsters with very severe cases that are actually being hospitalized. So, you know, I, I kind of want to handle this topic with kid gloves, and that's why I say that I'm going to defer the details, because I don't want people to, you know, don't go to the ED because there are some that obviously, you know, are getting admitted from that. So I, I would tend to say that they went to the right place.
Got it.
So let me, let me get back to you on that one, but thank you for asking the question.
Yeah, thank you for, for the follow-up.
So how about this? This is a, a, a nice trend, and I can't explain this at all. We have, from August through the end of October, we were averaging about one and a half deaths per day, slightly over that. And I don't want to jinx this, but you know, fingers crossed in November, it's been much, much less than that. As you can see, seven, which is a lot of people to die from COVID, but it's, it's down just under one a day as opposed to over one and a half a day. So let's hope that that continues. And I just wanted to, to pass that along, that this is actually what, what things are looking like here so far in November. I had no idea, I honestly don't know why the sudden change. There was a couple of questions about the monoclonal antibody infusions in some of our past briefings. I thought that I would provide some, some hard data on that. You can see that we've done over 1,600 MAB infusions up to this point, and they've been incredibly successful. Now, they're only administered to high-risk patients, or, and, you know, high-risk individuals who, and we've been able to keep their hospitalization rate down to about 2.4%. And that's, that is, that is very, very good. And we've, on average, given for the past, excuse me, from September and October, or excuse me, August through current date, 20 per day. And that's completely based on supply, not on demand. So a couple of takeaways here. Yes, the MAB infusions are incredibly effective, but you cannot use that as, you know, your choice of prevention. It is only used for, you know, those most severe cases, high-risk patients, and you need to be one of those lucky 20 individuals that are allowed to have it each day. There are many, many more referrals than that, and those are, only the, a small proportion of the referrals actually get the MAB. This is a, a chart that we put together. I think that this visually shows the, the true impact of the effectiveness of the, of getting vaccinated. You can see since about the time when we had an opportunity to see the effect of the vaccines, you know, around the middle of March or so, the disparity between the number of patients who have been in the hospital that are not fully vaccinated and those that are. And I've mentioned this before, and it still holds true, that those who are fully vaccinated but hospitalized, the average age of the people in that blue line are 14 years older than those in the orange line. So they, you know, there are those that are, you know, with, you know, immune issues and, and older that are more susceptible, but this is, this, you know, if this doesn't show you that the vaccinations are still very effective, then I, I question your data source. And to date, we're looking in Deschutes County of 20% effectiveness. And I have recently spoken with Dr. Peter Graven at OHSU, who has calculated the effective and observed vaccination, excuse me, the observed vaccination effectiveness across the state, and he's getting exactly the same numbers, right around 20%. So even though we see increasing numbers of breakthrough cases each month, it's because we have a higher proportion of our population who are vaccinated. It's not because the vaccination isn't working. And I should also add that there, we're not really seeing, and I don't expect to see any waning in the immunity from the vaccination until it's been about that 12-month period, and that's when it begins, and then it very, very slowly... and that's when it begins, and then it very, very slowly deteriorates, perhaps for the next nine months. You know, so each day you're like 1/180th less, you know, protected. So it takes a long time for that to wane. So we have talked about, you know, yeah, the older people have been the first ones to get the vaccination, so they're probably first in the queue to see any waning. I'm not sure we're seeing any significant waning yet. And that's, and I think our timing for the boosters is perfect, and highly encourage those people who are eligible for the booster to get it, so that we can completely take that whole topic of waning off the table. We can dodge that bullet. So that's all I have for today. I do have a follow-up question that I will do my best to share with this group, perhaps via email the next day or so.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Yes, I do want to remind the community that the monoclonal is available. I've heard of several people that have passed from COVID, and I really feel like, you know, we need to get that information out. Have we done a billboard? What have we done in order for that information to get out to our community? And some at BMC is also offering that service. So it is available. I know the state of Florida had them clinics all over the state. I feel like, you know, I don't want to lose any more people that we, you know, that aren't not aware of therapeutics, what you need to do, you know. So you aren't a, you know, your family isn't really in a horribly sad position. So please.
Yes, thank you for bringing that.
Spread the news.
I think that one of the things that I've heard here at St. Charles is just a tremendous kudos to our primary care providers who have been the best advocates for that monoclonal antibody infusion. They're the ones that are submitting the referrals for their patients. So if you are, if you do contract COVID, and you see your primary care provider, contact your primary care provider, they are your best advocate for the monoclonal antibody infusion. And it's not something that an individual patient says, okay, I should get it. No, that, and the primary care providers have just been absolute champions on this. And the way that they have been providing those referrals has really been a big part of the success of that program.
Thank you for mentioning that. I think that's really significant. I know that our personal internist immediately gave us a sheet of what we should be doing, the therapeutics, the vitamin D, the vitamin C, and zinc is critical. It's amazing, Americans wear so much sunscreen, we wear hats, and we don't get enough vitamin D naturally, so there's a lot of things you can do. But that was one of his first questions to us was, you know, this is a treatment available for the community. So I, you know, I want the communities to know about it. I just feel like the numbers are excellent, what, 2.4% of people receiving monoclonal. And the critical thing is, Dr. Johnson, is it needs to be done right away. You don't wait till you get really, really sick. You want to get that treatment done sooner than later. So talk to your doctor. And if you don't have a doctor, go to an emergency clinic, and please talk to a healthcare professional.
It's great to have, it's great to have these treatments available. I still think we should be putting tremendous emphasis on prevention, vaccination, mask wearing, social distancing when needed. And I hope that we can continue to get those messages out there as well.
Hey Rita, I think you're on.
All right. Thank you, Emily, for sharing the slides. Thank you, commissioners, for having us again. Again, as Emily mentioned, my name is Rita Batto. I'm the Public Health Program Manager for Advancement and Protection, of which the COVID response and resilience is a part of. So I'm going to be providing some updates on vaccinations and resources to help folks get vaccines. So this slide shows the COVID-19 vaccination rates across the state, as you can see from this map. Deshute County has vaccinated 79% of the 18 and older population, as you can see, while the state of Oregon has vaccinated 78%. So we are a little bit ahead of the state in terms of vaccination rates. For population of all ages vaccinated, that is those that are eligible and non-eligible as a denominator. We have 66.8% of Deshute County residents receiving COVID vaccines. And we, so that is very close to what we want. I know we can't get 100% because some people have medical exceptions or religious exemptions, so we probably will not get to 100%, but the closer we get to 100%, the better for us to be able to get out of these surges and be able to get to that herd immunity that we are all hoping for. Next slide. So this slide shows our weekly vaccination volume, which has increased tremendously for the past couple of weeks across all providers. So the orange bars showed pharmacy and PCP clinics, and the yellow bars showed Deshute County Health Services vaccinations. We went from a volume of 1,709 in mid-September to a volume of 5,330 by the end of October, as you can see from the graph. So we more than tripled our volume that we had mid-September. There was also a drastic increase in the volume that Deshute County alone provided from mid-September to the end of October. We moved from providing 217 vaccines, as you can see from the graph, the week of 9/5 to 9/11, to providing 3,583 vaccines, the week of 10/31 to 11/6. And this number includes doses that were provided by FEMA in partnership with Deshute County. I'll talk about specific strategies that we implemented to achieve these results in a couple of slides. Next slide. So this slide shows who qualifies for boosters generally. So if you receive the Pfizer or Moderna vaccine, you are 65 years and older, you are 18-plus, and you live in a long-term care setting or in a congregate setting, you are 18-plus and have underlying medical conditions, you are 18-plus and you work or live in a high-risk setting, as I mentioned, like congregate setting, in a prison, and other areas that would predispose you to getting infected, you would qualify to get a booster. For those who received J&amp;J, they should be 18 or older. And when can you get a vaccine for either Moderna, Pfizer, or J&amp;J? So for Moderna and Pfizer, you should have received your second dose six months prior. For J&amp;J, you should have received, J&amp;J is just one dose, so you should have received your dose two months prior. So currently, the CDC recommends any of the vaccines can be taken as a booster. So you don't need to necessarily take the vaccine that you previously had. So if you had J&amp;J, you can go for Moderna or Pfizer. If you had Pfizer, you could go for Moderna. If you had Moderna, you could go for Pfizer. So you can pretty much choose any of the vaccines as a booster. Next slide. So for this slide, there's comparison between some of the respiratory diseases that we are seeing. This is flu season, most children are back in school, and this means that they are being exposed to more potentially infectious organisms. COVID-19 continues to infect us, and in addition to that, we have to deal with the flu season. The common cold, which has always been with us, is also still present, so we have to deal with all these respiratory infections. The CDC warned about the risk of respiratory syncytial virus, which is RSV. This is a virus that affects mostly children under two years, but can also affect children who are school-aged. So the flu, COVID, RSV, the common cold, they can all be transmitted via droplets. Droplets are essentially generated by coughing, sneezing, or talking. And transmission cannot occur when respiratory droplets reach a susceptible mucosal surface. And those mucosal surfaces can include the eyes, the nose, the mouth. These droplets usually travel about six to three feet before they fall on the ground. So we recommend that people should wear masks for all these. That is one prevention people can put in place to be able to prevent any of these respiratory infections. Onset of COVID is usually two to 14 days, just by way of distinguishing between these different respiratory viruses, because they all have very common symptoms or signs. So a few things you can use to differentiate them are the onset after exposure to the virus. So for COVID, it's two to 14 days, and loss of taste and smell is very peculiar to COVID. Flu is usually one to four days after exposure and usually has a sudden onset. You may feel fine one day, and the next day you are feeling sick. That is very peculiar for flu. For RSV, which is respiratory syncytial virus, it usually occurs four to six days after exposure. And wheezing is a very common sign that you would see for RSV. Onset of common cold is usually two to three days after exposure. So as I said earlier on, please wear a mask to prevent all of these. Aside mask-wearing, we are recommending that everyone who is old enough to get a COVID vaccine should do so, including five to 11-year-olds, unless, of course, if it's contraindicated. If for some reason, medical reason, especially if you cannot get vaccinated, then you would be able to be exempted. But we encourage everybody who is able to get vaccinated to get vaccinated. And everybody who is six months or older should be able to get a flu vaccine as well. So please get your flu shots. And the CDC supports getting both vaccinations on the same day or at the same time. So you can actually get both COVID and flu vaccine at the same time. If you want more information about these respiratory viruses, you can go to Oregon Vaccine News or visit your PCP. Next slide. So where can you get a booster shot? So booster shots are being provided by pharmacies. You can go to www.vaccines.org. You can call your PCP and set up an appointment. We also have limited availability in Deshute County pop-up clinics. Next slide. So this slide just shows various places where you can get vaccines. They are free, you don't need an insurance, no ID is needed. Just go to that website, www.centraloregoncovidvaccine.com, and you can schedule your COVID shot. So you can schedule at St. Charles, Mosaic, High Lakes, Copacabana. Those are just a few examples of places that you can schedule your vaccine. Next slide. So for this slide, it talks about we diversifying our reach. As I mentioned earlier, in our attempt to continue to function adequately in our role as a safety net provider, we have implemented new strategies to help us target specific populations, including vulnerable populations such as long-term care facilities, adult foster care, assisted living facilities, memory care centers. So aside our regular clinics, we have increased our capacity with some new clinics that are targeted at specific populations. We have contracted MTI, which is Medical Teams International, to provide vaccines at the airport for people who are traveling and would like to take advantage of a vaccine clinic. So we do provide vaccines at the airport on Fridays from 8:00 a.m. to 1:15 p.m. MTI has, is also deployed to provide vaccines to identified Black Indigenous and people of color. So this effort has been very helpful in our attempt to provide vaccines equitably for everybody, so that everybody will be able to have access. We also have a couple of clinics scheduled at La Frontera Mexican Restaurant in Redmont on Thursdays, so if you need to get a vaccine. So for La Frontera, we have a clinic coming up. Because this Thursday is a holiday, we didn't schedule any clinic there, but next Thursday we would have a clinic from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. So if you need a COVID vaccine, you can go there. So far, we have had a positive response from the target communities that we've provided vaccines to. We also provide some vaccines to our homeless community through our contract with MTI. And another thing that we did was to provide technical assistance, including training to first responder vaccine teams to enable them to provide vaccines to other team members. We also partnered with FEMA and OHA to provide drive-through vaccines in Deshute County. So we did see a very, as you saw from the previous graph, we saw a very big bump in the volume of vaccines that we gave. So for the week of October 24th to the 30th, Deshute County Health Services, we gave a total of 1,743 vaccines. At our weekly pop-up clinics, we gave 1,130. For the vulnerable populations, we gave 126. And for the BIPOC outreach, which is Black, Indigenous, and people of color, we gave 329. For the first responder clinics, we gave 158. So 32.5% of total vaccines given were administered by Deshute County for this week, for that week, 10/24 to 10/30. And for the week of 10/31 to 11/6, we gave a total of 3,583 vaccines. 1,124 of those were from our weekly pop-up clinics. 217 of those were from our vulnerable populations that I mentioned earlier on, so long-term care facilities, adult foster homes, homebound, memory care, assisted living facilities. For the BIPOC population, we were able to provide 198 vaccines. And for the first responder clinics, we provided 46. For our FEMA drive-through, we partnered with FEMA and OHA to provide vaccines, as I mentioned earlier on. We provide 1,998 vaccines. So that is a lot of vaccines that shots in arms that we were able to provide, and we are so happy that people were out there and eager to get their doses. Next slide. Yeah, so that is all I have in terms of COVID vaccine updates. If you have any questions, you can go to www.deshute.org/covid19vaccine, or you can email us at healthservices@deshute.org, or you can call the COVID hotline at 541-699-5109. We are open from Mondays to Fridays, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
I was trying to, Rita, as you were going through that, I was trying to, I was looking at this bar on the weekly vaccination volume chart showing just the tremendous number of doses of vaccine that were administered by the county, our county health services. And I was trying to, I was trying to pull out this story from your explanation of kind of why the proportion, the county proportion is so high this week. And I, you know, I heard that we're doing good outreach to vulnerable populations and BIPOC, and, you know, and doing some other kind of targeted outreach, but I think I also heard you say that the drive-throughs that we're doing with FEMA, that was almost 2,000 people? So I mean, is that, is that the big story in this bar chart that, you know, that there's this huge number, you know, the county is now administering a huge that there's this huge number, you know, the county is now administering a huge number of the, a huge proportion of the total vaccine doses in, in our community? And, you know, that's in significant part because there's this drive-through option now, which is maybe people just want to use because it's so much easier than other options? Is that, is that the big story there?
Yes, absolutely. That is correct. That is not the only story, but that is, is a big part of the story. The outreach that we've been doing, we've seen a significant turnout. People are really eager to take vaccines. And I, FEMA drive-through alone was able to provide 1,998 vaccines. So I think it's a big part of the story, as you mentioned. But the other outreaches that we are doing to the BIPOC communities, although those numbers are very small compared to what we've been able to get in the past, is very, very significant. If you look at the jump on the OHA website, it, we've had a very big jump for the BIPOC communities because of those outreach efforts. So although the numbers look small compared to what the FEMA drive-through numbers are driving, I think that, that is very significant, that's a very significant jump for us, because it has increased our percentage for the BIPOC communities by a very significant number.
Great, thank you. And yeah, I mean, and, and one of the reasons I'm asking about this is, you know, a, a month or two ago, we were talking about how we really wanted to drive a lot of, a, a lot of traffic to pharmacies and primary care physicians. And, you know, this, you know, this most recent week, you know, the proportions, you know, don't, don't look like that. I, you know, but I, I guess I would just want to make sure that we're not worried, you know, like, you know, maybe the story is, you know, that this new drive-through option partnership with FEMA is just, you know, a really good way of making vaccine access, more easily accessible to people. So we're not worried that there's not a larger volume coming through primary care physicians and pharmacies, but I, I just wanted to check on that.
So in fact, Commissioner.
I would, yeah.
Providers, oh, sorry, Emily, just, I'll just finish it. In fact, providers have reached out to us, private providers have reached out to us to help diffuse some of the pressure of the demand we're facing. And Emily did a valiant job of partnering with OHA and FEMA to bring that capacity to Deshute County to diffuse that pressure. So I think that's part of the story. The other part is that some of these data are preliminary. It takes a while. There's an alert system that we would input the data. There is some backlog there. So the proportions might change next week or the following week as we look at the data that have been uploaded. So that's, I think, another part of this story that we need to tell. Overall, our strategy remains as guided by the three of you, which is look for community solutions to address the rollout and the needs of the community first. And our role is primarily to be a safety net and provide access points for the most vulnerable populations.
So Nahad, if we're doing these drive-through, so people are no longer being watched for, what was it, 30 minutes or something that we were doing at the mass vaccination clinic? Were we not watching people to make sure that there were no issues?
We, we are. Emily, do you want to expound on that?
Yeah, so I would, I would just say a couple of things about the FEMA track and the numbers. I would just add a little bit to what Nahad said. First is, yes, this is a temporary solution. So FEMA is here for these drive-through clinics for just two weeks. So it is a little bit of breathing room, and hopefully it does relieve some of the pressure that pharmacies and our PCPs were facing in trying to get all of these boosters in and the kids coming in for pediatric doses made it a lot, right? Like, we can all say that people are exhausted, whether they're in a hospital or some other provider situation. So, so some of that demand going to FEMA is what we wanted to do to diffuse that a little bit. And it's only temporary, so they're not going to be here for a long term. The second thing about the numbers, like Nahad mentioned, is these are preliminary numbers. We have the numbers directly for our clinics, but like he said, those numbers may increase in the pharmacies and PCPs in the last, you know, few weeks may have more numbers. So maybe net, like, maybe we're really around 6,000 that we're saw. We don't know that for 100% until all of that data is uploaded, which there are backlogs there. We know our data because we know those numbers specifically, but we don't know, you know, the whole picture to 100% accuracy. As far as watching and having that respite period, FEMA takes these, these buses, and I don't know if any of you guys had a chance to go in Le Pine, they were there for two days, they were in Bend for four days, and then this week, they're up at the fairgrounds for six days, so over the weekend included. And they do include respite in that, that process. So they give the, the vaccine in the vehicle, and then they have the people park, and they mark the time on their windshield, and then there's a person watching the people in their vehicle, remaining in their vehicle, but just making sure that, that, that respite period is observed even in the drive-through situation. They have lots of experience doing this because they move throughout the country and Oregon doing these vaccination events in this manner, so they have lots of practice doing that.
And I, I just also wanted to add that, yeah, FEMA brought in a lot of volume, but I think even without FEMA, we would have seen that maybe not as much increase, but there would still be an increase. Because if you check the week prior, which is 10/24 to 10/30, FEMA wasn't here, but you can see that the PCPs provided a lot of vaccines. So I think some of that volume was absorbed, most of that volume was absorbed by FEMA. And I think that is good because we just have them here for a period. So as Emily said, to provide respite for all our providers that have been doing a very great job, we did a lot of marketing so that people would go to those drive-throughs. So as you can see from the orange bar, the previous week, the numbers were very high. And then the numbers decreased drastically for 10/31 to 11/6. So even though volume would have increased, we think that having FEMA here was very helpful, especially for our providers, our providers who needed a respite, who, who needed respite so much, after all the hard work they've been doing for several weeks. So I don't think FEMA alone necessarily drove the increase in volume, because that wouldn't explain the week of 10/24 to 10/30, which is even higher than the 10/31 to 11/6. But I think they did contribute significantly in increasing the volumes for the PCPs.
Great. And then, and importantly, as Nahad said, the, the PCPs and pharmacies asked.
Oh, yeah.
Asked us to help absorb some of this huge increase in demand for boosters.
There is a weekly meeting which Dr. Conway hosts with our providers, both on testing and vaccination. And certainly during some of these meetings, providers have said, hey, we need some help. Let's look for solutions. And that's our role. That's our role is to facilitate in the, you know, the provision of these services in the community and then fill the gaps. And that's hopefully what we're doing.
Great. Good.
Okay, thank you very much for the update today. Is there anything else then? Is there any comment on the person that was trying to share with us?
Well, thank you, Chair de Bohn. I shared the, the questions with Nahad, and it's up to you if you want to respond to them now or if you'd like to.
Or is it for afterwards? I'm just making sure.
I'm not sure what the protocol is, whether I should meet with our community member afterwards or.
Yeah, let's, yeah, go ahead and do that then. Yeah, I was just making sure if there's anything. Okay, good.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Yes, and thanks for, thanks for all the great information today.
And your great work in the community.
I'm glad to see we went up to fourth for vaccinated on that chart. We're just going, we're getting up there.
About the Buckeyes or?
Oh, no, we're third. Nahad, I'm talking about the county. We were tied, we were tied for fifth, and now we're fourth.
Elsewhere.
Well, Nahad, we may meet again.
Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, so at this time, we, the way our agenda was set up, we could either take a break or get to executive session, I think.
The executive session teams are in the hallway, so.
Yeah, there we go, so let's go for it.
Do you want me to bring them in?
Yeah.
We can, we can stretch for a moment, right?
Yep, exactly.
Yeah. A couple hours.